Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,234th Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Banjero. Here. Mr. Law.
Here.
Mrs. DeNaro.
Absol.
Mr. Drows.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Is here.
Karen Magnos is here. Chairman Wilshaw.
Is here. Thank you. And also with us tonight, we have Jacob Uhazi. We also have Stephanie Reese, both from our planning staff. They'll be giving background information on our one agenda item that we have today. And for folks in our audience that haven't been to one of our meetings, we will start by speaking with the petitioner about this item. There will be an opportunity for us to ask questions of the petitioner, and then we'll have an opportunity for folks in the audience who wish to speak for or against this petition to come forward and give us their information. After all that is received, then we will make our decision on this item. We are going to start with the public hearing section of our agenda, item number one.
Petition 2025-07-02-15 submitted by Manik and Smith Group on behalf of Clean Express Car Wash, requesting waiver use approval under Sections 3.11 and Section 6.07 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance, as amended to operate an auto wash establishment at 38888 Six Mile Road, located at the northeast corner of Fox Drive and Six Mile Road in the southwest quarter of Section 7.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
My company represents the owner of this land, but not the petitioner. But for that reason, I'm going to recuse myself from the proceedings this evening.
Okay. We'll let you step away from the dais.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. And now we'll go to Mr. Uhazi for background information on this petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. This is a request to operate an auto wash establishment located on the northeast corner of Fox Drive and Six Mile Road. The petition parcel is L-shaped with approximately 207 feet of frontage on Six Mile Road and 311 feet along Fox Drive. The site is the former Buca de Pepo restaurant, which is currently vacant, and the parcel size is 1.61 acres. The existing zoning is C2. Adjacent properties are zoned RUF to the east, which is the cemetery, with the parking in front, Zone P. To the north and west is C1 as part of the assisted living center, and across Six Mile is commercial zone C4. Operating auto wash establishments are allowed as a waiver use under Section 6.07 of the zoning ordinance. Auto wash establishments cannot be located near than 150 feet as measured from any point of the property to any point of a church, public, or parochial school, or playground. There are neither of those within 150 feet of this property. The proposal includes removing the existing building, including the basement, foundation, and utilities, and it would move the entrance from Six Mile to, from the southwest corner to the southeast corner of the property, and a second drive is shown in the northwest corner to access Fox Drive. A new 14,229-square-foot auto wash building that measures 23 feet in height at its tallest and about 17 and 1/2 feet along the rest of the building would be constructed. The building's dimensions would be, would measure 93 feet by 153 feet. The proposed building will meet both the 15-feet and 8-foot rear minimum setback requirements. A Section 6.07 requires that a building be stipulated, situated, excuse me, no closer than 35 feet on one side of the property and 8 feet to the other. The building will be approximately 60 feet from the west property line and approximately 45 feet from the east property line. The building complies with all minimum required setback regulations. Plans show three service lanes providing access to the car wash. The lanes commence along the east side of the property, maneuvering in a northerly direction, and then looping back south to the entrance on the north side of the building. The plan shows stacking for 21 vehicles. Each lane would have a pay station adjacent to the east side of the building just before turning and entering into the building. Beyond the pay stations, the service lanes taper to a single 12-foot drive aisle to manage vehicles as they enter the facility. A 12-foot bypass lane is provided after the pay stations, allowing vehicles to exit the site via 24-foot drive onto Fox Drive. Vehicles will exit the car wash at the south end of the building and can either turn left to exit the site or make a right onto the two-way drive. This would provide access to 13 parking spaces, outdoor parking spaces, nine of which would have proposed outdoor vacuum. There is a second 20-foot entrance to the building on the south end. This allows access to 14 indoor vacuum spaces. There is also a drive to the east that connects to the Trinity House Theater. The site plan shows single-stripe parking. The zoning ordinance requires at least 20 spaces for auto wash establishments. The site plan shows 13 outdoor parking stalls located on the eastern side of the building, and the floor plan shows an additional 14 parking spaces with vacuums which are located within the building. There is a dumpster enclosure shown in the northwest corner of the building. Details of the enclosed closure are not provided. A single dumpster would need to be consistent with the city's policy of requiring durable, long-lasting solid panel material and enclosed on three sides by masonry walls that would be at least six feet in height. Additional details are required, are required to determine compliance with the city's sign regulations. The maximum height for a monument sign in the C2 business district is six feet. The maximum area for a sign in the C2 business district is 30 square feet. According to Section 11.04, no sign shall be permitted at any location that creates any type of safety hazard or visual impairment to pedestrian or vehicular traffic. The submitted floor plan shows three separate portions of the building. There are the car wash bays, the indoor vacuum section, and then the office bathrooms and equipment rooms. Elevations show the building with quick brick finish, the light finish along the top three quarters, and a dark finish across the bottom quarter. There will be fiber cement horizontal siding for the wall with the car wash logo over here. They also have some renderings that will be shown here in a second. The landscape plan shows 37 frontage trees, 30 which are evergreens, and seven are deciduous. There will also be eight existing trees remaining in the parking lot, and there will be an evergreen and deciduous screening plants along Fox Drive. No changes would be provided to the eastern property line along the C2 to RUF. There is an existing wall and fencing there. And then there are eight existing trees along the west property line, the C2 to C1 border. The required amount of green belt buffering along the west property line is 10 trees. The site plan provides three more trees along the west property line satisfying the requirement. The south property line trees are already provided as the south property line is in the Six Mile Road frontage. Five trees are required. Seven of the frontage trees are provided satisfying the requirement. There will be stone mulch planting beds as well as lawn area with sod. The photometric plan submitted for the site shows footlight candles at or below .5 at the property line with adjacent properties. Two existing light poles are scheduled to remain on the property. Three proposed 18-foot lighting fixtures are shown. The other signal lighting fixture over the west side of the parking lot, there is another fixture over the west side of the parking lot. The double lighting fixtures over the 12-foot drive north of the building providing illumination to the exit to the indoor, exit of the indoor vacuums and the entrance to the car wash. The average illumination levels on the car wash property appear consistent with the pre-existing ones. As I mentioned, here are some of the renderings that have been provided since our study session. As you can see, there's the light covering along the top three quarters and then the The petitioner also submitted a stormwater management plan that shows underground storage, or underground water storage in the southwest corner of the property by Six Mile Drive. As part of the petition, they have worked with neighboring property owners, and in the past, there was a traffic study done. They did submit an example of what was provided from that traffic study showing a proposed signal layout that they, I believe they were working with the county to get approval on, showing how traffic would be managed at the site. And then, in addition to that, they also provided a draft letter showing to the neighbors to secure access to the Fox Drive, and they also expressed, they expressed, they're reviewing their ability to shut off the interior lighting after hours that was shown to be a concern at our study session as well. And that, with that, Mr. Chairman, I have some correspondence to read.
Sure. If you'd like to read out the correspondence, please.
From the Engineering Division, in accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time, but would like to note the following items. One, the subject parcel has assigned the address 38888 Six Mile Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. Two, existing parcel is currently served by Public Sanitary Sewer, Storm Water, and Water Main. Based on the submitted drawings, we have the following comments. One, sanitary sewer. The drawings do not include a basis of design for the proposed sanitary sewer outlet, but we do not believe the change will, in use, will negatively impact the existing system. The developer will be required to clean and televise the existing sanitary sewer lead if it is to be reused. If the condition is not sufficient for reuse, a new service line will be installed to the parcel. Two, water main. The drawings do not include that the existing water service will be reused for the proposed business, but if that is the intention, the owner will need to determine if the existing service is correctly sized for the proposed use. Three, stormwater. The drawings do not indicate any stormwater sewer information. Stormwater, stormwater sewer design and detention will be required per Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. This department will do a full review of the proposed improvements when drawings are submitted for permitting. Three, any additional improvements within the Six Mile right-of-way will require approval and permitting for the Wayne County Department of Public Works. Turning movements onto Six Mile from the site may be restricted based on the comments from Wayne County traffic reviews. Four, we recommend that the proposed business be required to place sidewalks along the west side of the property along Fox Drive frontage to facilitate pedestrian traffic into the existing and proposed business through that corridor. Signed, David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Marshal's Office, the office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to, to construct a commercial building on property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to the proposal. A further detailed plan review will take place when the division receives an official plan set. Signed, Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. From the Police Department, I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to the proposal. Signed, Paul Walters, Sergeant Traffic Bureau. From our Inspection Department, pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. Signage shall conform to the city's signed ordinance or a variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required. An enclosure of sufficient height to completely screen the dumpster is required on three sides of the waste receptacle with a solid gate on the fourth side. The height of the enclosure must be not less than six feet or at least one foot above the height of the dumpster, whatever is greater. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass, and when not in use, closed at all times. The enclosure must be constructed of the same compatible material and colors as the principal building in terms of texture and quality. This department has no further objections to the petition. Signed, Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. From the Treasury Office, all taxes have been paid on this property. Signed, Susie Nash, City Treasurer. And, Mr. Chairman, we also did receive a number of public comments that have been provided to you for review ahead of time and to be considered.
Yes, yes, we did receive many emails regarding this petition, so instead of reading those all out individually, just note that they are part of our record, and we have had a chance to review them, so thank you. Is there any questions for the planning staff from any of the commissioners?
Chair.
Mr. Banjero.
Jacob, so there was new, there's no new traffic study done?
No, they provided one that was done, I believe, in 2023.
Okay. And that was done by Schoolcraft College?
Yes, I don't know in what capacity, but yeah, they was, they were the ones that's provided.
Okay. And they are going to put a new traffic light in?
I believe there are talks with Wayne County, but that would probably be a better question for the petitioner to see where that is actually in the process.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Banjero. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Drows.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Uhazi, there were several renderings included in the packet, and I guess a couple of them appeared to differ from the site plan. Are those provided as more of a reference for some of the, you know, the material choices? Or I guess particularly the differences between the elevation and, I believe, is on the architectural site plan and then the rendering, so?
I believe there were as examples more for the covering, to give a, the elevations where the, what the petitioner was using, and then the renderings were more for the color palettes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drows. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Uhazi, just one question. You mentioned the agreement between this petitioner and the neighbor who owns this strip of property along Fox Drive to get cross-access to that road. Is that agreement in place, or is that just proposed at this time?
I believe has been sent to the neighbor, as far as I know, but I've, I do not know the status since then.
Okay.
They seemed confident that it would be something that they could come to, work together on, but I've not seen anything that's been finally signed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that for me. If there's no other questions for staff, then the petitioner is in our audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium. I'll ask that you start with your name and address for our record. Good evening.
Good evening, petitioners. My name is Jake Riellet with the Manik and Smith Group. We're the design engineer on this project. Thanks for your presentation, Jacob. I mean, they covered most of the basics of the, the site plan itself. Little background on Express Wash, it's a, about 125 locations throughout the Midwest, started in Ohio. They're moving gradually north into Michigan. This will be the third Livonia site that we've done, so you guys are a little familiar with what we do. They really pride themselves on, you know, the, the visual look of their sites, the over, over, exceeding the requirements on landscaping and, and really working with neighbors and helping improve the whole area, not just their own site. There's a pretty advanced water reclamation system that recycles about 80% of the water used from each wash, so it really minimizes the, the impact on utilities and all of those related things. As far as stacking, we, we don't have any concerns about the ability of this site to spilling out into the road or impacting that with backups or anything along those lines. They're capable of cycling through about 100 cars an hour if need be, so the, the long backups that you see on some other car wash models just don't happen on this because of the more advanced blower technology. They don't need hand dryers out at the end slowing things down. It's, it's 90 seconds, you're in and you're out. Vacuums are free to the public and open at all times. Well, open during business hours, but that's just a free amenity that's added with the, with the service. As far as the traffic signal proposed, that's something that's been in the works for, as I understand it, about two years. Schoolcraft College and HRC have been working on that with the county. The main reason, to my knowledge, that it hasn't happened yet is because the existing curb cut of the Buca de Pepo site is on the southwest corner, which would really make the, the signal unviable. And then by going forward with the layout that we provide here, it allows that curb cut on Six Mile to move over to the southeast corner of the site and really allow that traffic signal to go into place. And we believe that's going to really offset a lot of the traffic concerns that might be had about a car wash coming in here, because car washes are an automated heavy use. As far as a new traffic study, I mean, we didn't have time since the study meeting last week to, to get a full new traffic study done for this site, but I can provide you some useful numbers and tell you that the ITE manual for traffic for a car wash site recommends that you use about 70 trips generated for a peak hour traffic. So that's your peak hour, your most vehicles you're ever going to see is about 70, but for a car wash site, they recommend about a 75% factor of that to be passed by traffic. Car washes are, is an impulse purchase that you get when you're already out. People aren't leaving their houses to go get a car wash and go back home. So that impact that you're going to see of new trips generated by this site is really only 17, 18 at the peak hours of business. And we believe, you know, with the traffic signal going in there, that's going to be an improvement upon the existing condition, and it's going to finally allow for that left turn off of Fox Drive onto Six Mile. So we believe that the traffic impact is going to be improved by, from the current state.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us about the business and the layout of this business? I think you, you mentioned that you have sort of a unique design in the sense of, compared to the other ones that we've seen in the city with indoor?
Yes, the, the indoor vac building is a sort of new prototype concept that they've been working for. We've got three or four sites in development with this, but especially in, in Michigan, you know, with our lovely winters, you don't want to be outside vacuuming your cars, walking around in the freezing cold. This allows for an indoor vacuum bay after you've gone through the car wash. You are free to, at any point, to come into the sort of a hangar bay here and use the vacuums inside. It's, it's heated. The floors are all heated, so you won't have any, you know, freezing issues, anything like that. And it's really more a luxury model of a car wash. It's kind of like the crown jewel of what you would ask for a car wash to be, and it kind of is a good, a common concern we see with cities with these new sites we bring in, is everybody says, there's so many car washes, why do we need more? Generally, the, the thought process is, so Express has 120 sites, mostly in Columbus. Detroit area is just underserved as far as car washes. The number of washes per vehicle in this area is significantly lower than you would see in Columbus, and they believe it's kind of created by, you know, when you have these subscription model washes, somebody that maybe only washed their car once a month, they come, they like it, they get a subscription, all of a sudden, they're doing it two, three times a week. You can really increase the demand by having these nice, you know, systems. The subscription at this location is good at any of our other locations as well, so people really, they'll, they'll put these, you know, only a mile away from each other back in Columbus, and they don't see an impact on, a loss on the business. They really do support themselves.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us before we get some questions for you?
Fire away.
All right. Let's see if there's some questions. Any commissioners with questions for the petitioner? Mr. Drows.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Riellet, at our study session, we talked briefly about some of the adjacent property owners, and I think coordination with them is, is, you know, seems like that'd be an important item for this. Sounds like the Fox Drive is well underway with getting an easement and that access, which I think will help with traffic. But to the property to the east, I think at, at our initial rapid response meeting several months ago, we talked about how, although it's maybe not documented, it seems like there was some kind of reciprocal parking agreement written down or maybe not with the, I think it's the Trinity House to the east. Has there any, been any discussion between the property owners about if there's an option for providing some of that parking? Because right now, it's, I think it's about 127 spaces, and, you know, I think you're taking it down to 13 with most of those being vacuumed sites. So has there been any discussion with the adjacent property owner about how that might be accommodated?
I believe Express has reached out to them. We did dig through sort of the titles and easements, and there, there's a cross-access agreement in place, but there's no written formal part, shared parking agreement. I know, speaking with the Express representatives, they've got no issue with any of these spaces being used after business hours. We close at 8:00 PM every night. I don't know what time most of their shows are at, but they, I know they have reached out or intend to, at least, to them to come up with some sort of formal agreement as far as sharing any of our, you know, we have a lot of open spaces along there. I don't think we'd be able to keep the, the indoor vacuum bay open all night, but I don't think Express has any issue with sharing those outsourced spaces after business hours.
Okay. And then I guess expanding on that, there is a fair amount of open space on the north side of the property. If, would that be some sort of arrangement that would be possible to maybe repurpose that for cross-access parking? Because really, I mean, they're, they're located between a daycare center and, and the cemetery, which certainly the latter will not be able to move. I guess if there's any opportunity, is that something that's on the table?
Essentially, so the, the northern portion of this property had been held off in the design in case the, the property owner to the north wanted to expand his own parking lot as part of the agreement to get that Fox Drive access. It doesn't seem like that is one of his requests at this time, so there's a chance we could provide extra parking up there. I don't know, that would be something that I would have to discuss with Express ownership if we were to create extra parking just for someone else to use. It's, I can't say, promise you that for them. So, but as of right now, that's the reason that north area has been withheld is just in case it was needed as part of negotiation for the, the Fox Drive access, because that was a major priority for the, the traffic signal as well.
Okay. And I guess I have one question on the, the traffic study itself. So it looks like it was done roughly 2002, 2000, excuse me, 2022, 2023. Is that reflective of current traffic volumes? I know we had kind of a dip in traffic after COVID and that rebounded. Is that, I guess, is that, the findings of that study still valid and, you know, with, obviously, the, the restaurant has been deducted, but now we're adding this back in? I guess maybe talk to validity of the traffic study and if there could be any additional work needed, what that might look like.
So we have a, a traffic engineer from HRC that I believe worked on the traffic study here, and she could probably speak to that question a lot better than I can. I'm no traffic expert.
Thank you.
That'd be excellent. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Leah Michaels with HRC. The traffic study you saw was something that HRC had worked with Schoolcraft College on a couple of years ago, so I do want to make it clear that it does not have the projected traffic volumes from the car wash in there. This study was completed to look at the potential for a new traffic signal at Fox Drive and Six Mile. So we have been working with Schoolcraft College for the past couple of years, as well as some of the engineers from the city and Wayne County to try to get this traffic signal installed. One of the major reasons it hasn't yet is because of the location of the current driveway to Buca de Pepo property. One of the stipulations from Wayne County roads is that that driveway not be there because it conflicts with some of the turning movements specifically from Quakertown on the south side. So that's the reason the signal has not gone in yet. This is a signal that is being funded by Schoolcraft College. So I'm here tonight just to point to if this land were to get redeveloped, we really want that driveway location to be pushed towards the east so that Schoolcraft College and others can get the traffic signal there. So long answer to that question, but yes, it was done a couple of years ago for purposes of the traffic signal.
And I guess with that...
Sorry. So John's from Schoolcraft College, and he wanted me to point out that a couple of years ago, a signal was warranted there. a couple of years ago, a signal was warranted there without any additional traffic from some of these developments that have occurred over the past couple of years.
Okay. And I guess maybe last question on that is if this driveway were to be moved as part of this project, is there anything holding back the signal project at that point? So if this gets approved, the signal could get started. And kind of where I'm looking at it is the signal's in place before the development opens. Is that realistic?
Yeah, so we have it fully designed. We don't have permits yet. We were kind of waiting on that because we knew a permit wouldn't be issued until the driveway was closed. So we have plans ready to go. It'd just be a matter of getting permits from the county and bidding the project.
And funding's in place?
Yep. Schoolcraft College and their group of people have all agreed to fund it, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Dros. Ms. Michaels, while you're up here, is there any other questions for our traffic engineer, Ms., Mr. Bonjero?
Yes, thank you for coming up tonight. So I know you didn't, the study that's two and a half years old has, didn't ever, couldn't never factor in a car wash.
Correct.
Would you even be able to speak to, with this light, you think, help manage that traffic adequately with the car wash being there? Or you couldn't even answer that? You'd have to do a new study?
It'd be tough to answer, but I do know that the, putting a traffic signal at Fox Drive, there was room for additional traffic because I know Schoolcraft College had some other developments kind of planned in the area that we knew this traffic signal could absorb some additional traffic in the area. I think anything from this parcel, at least having the driveway go out to Fox Drive is a definite improvement. People using the Fox Drive and then a signal to turn onto Six Mile is a lot safer than, I think, the current driveway that's there now.
But you couldn't, without them doing a separate study, you, there's just no way you could.
Yeah, I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our traffic engineer? Mr. Long.
Can you speak to the configuration of, of a signal? I mean, Fox Drive and then the entrance to the subdivision are not aligned. So how does that work? Is there, is there more than one light there and do they allow them to turn into a green? Do you know how that would work?
Yep, so it'd be like a split phase. So when Quakertown received a green light, it would be the only one that had a green light. So everybody exiting Quakertown and then Fox Drive would be a separate phase. So it would have a green light at a separate time and then your Six Mile traffic would go together. So they would each have separate signals and separate phasing. And Quak, I guess I should add, Quakertown and working with the city of Livonia will be adding a northbound left turn lane, so taking out that median that's there to help improve some of the flow coming off of Quakertown onto Six Mile. That was something we'd been working with the city engineers on as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. My question was actually very similar. It's just in, in explaining that this is essentially an offset signal and that both the traffic coming out of Fox Drive and Quakertown will both be protected.
Correct.
With a dedicated phase as they, they use their respective directions.
Correct.
Okay, in that way, there's no conflicts or, or cars hitting each other. Excellent. Okay, that's the only question I had. Is there any other questions for our traffic engineer? We're going to let her sit back down. Everyone's good. Mr. Dros?
Maybe one more.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels.
The, and I guess it's, you're the engineer record for the signal, but is there been any discussion, maybe Wayne County offered it, in terms of the operation of the car wash driveway? Would that Six Mile access be right in, right out? Or would it permit like a left turn out of there? Just curious.
So I don't know about the car wash specifically. About a year ago, when we were talking about Buca de Pepo, it, they were requesting that it be right in, right out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dros.
Just, just one last question than you've done. How crucial to this traffic management, in your opinion, is that additional access onto Fox Drive? You know what I'm saying? That's needed, right, to pull this off? They're going to need that if they don't, because that's not a guarantee yet. They don't have it, they've been talking to them, but they don't have it yet.
For a car wash, yes, I think you definitely need a second.
So they need that additional, okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Anyone else? All right, I think for all said, thank you, Ms. Michaels for coming up. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Bonjero.
Just, just following up on that Fox Street access, what is the holdup of like not having a, I mean, I know you.
Yeah, so the property owner to the north, Marion's name, he was at the study meeting that we had last week. He's, I know the agreement was sent over the day after that meeting. I know it's been signed by the Express side. It's, I don't think there's any holdup really at this point. It may have already been signed. I'm, Express is handling that, it's not the engineer, but it's, I mean, we would expect that within the next week to be signed. Yeah, I mean, there's been no, there's no resistance to it at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Mr. Long?
Thank you. Could you talk about the proposed traffic flow on the site and would exit traffic then, would, would traffic be forced to exit onto Fox Road? Because that would certainly provide.
No, they would have, they would have free choices to it. So yeah, if you've got the site plan up here, I don't know if the audience can see it, but you'd enter in from either Fox or Six Mile and you'd come around the west and south side of the building. You enter into the stacking lanes along the southeast corner here. You go up, you've got three pay station kiosks there. You come around, make the U-turn into the tunnel at that northeast corner of the building. Come all the way through the wash tunnel. At that point, you're free to leave if you choose to. If you want to wash your car, you're able to make the U-turn back into the, the wash bay on the west side of the building and come out the north side. Or you can use the outdoor vacuums to swing around the south end there. And at that point, it's fully a two-way drive around both ends, so you can, you're free to, either way you come in, you're free to use either exit.
Understand, and people are going to do what they do, just like people turn left on Fox Drive right now, even though they're.
With this, they'd be allowed to.
Right. Is, could, you know, would the petitioner be opposed to encouraging people to exit Fox Drive? And again, I guess we, we probably would want to see that driveway as a right turn only anyway.
Yeah, I mean, if, if no left turn is allowed out of, out of Six Mile, I mean, that would, that alone would encourage anybody wanting to go left to exit the Fox Drive side.
And then there's been discussion, and understandably, you can't speak to the, to the ability of the proposed parking to the north to help the theater, but would they be able to get access to that site or is it all gated out? Does the, does the, does the bailout lane get them back there?
So the bailout lane's not gated or anything and the, I'm not sure at night what would happen with the, the kiosks, if they'd be able to access through there if we were to put something up in that, that northeast sort of square that's kind of isolated from the rest of the project. But yeah, I mean, I'm sure there'd be some sort of signage in place saying, you know, after hours, you can go through the bailout lanes here and access that area if we were to add some sort of parking up in that section. We had also initially discussed a cross-access connection with the property to the north if they were going to access that, but that, and they ended up just allowing the, the cut straight to Fox Drive.
And then my, my last, hopefully my last comment or question is, can you talk a little bit more about the water-saving technologies that you use now compared to some of the older car washes and, and speak to that, please?
Yep, so if you can then get to the utility plan here, it'd be a C400, I believe.
I'll have to bring it up.
Good. But in the meantime, I can kind of walk you through it. So along that, underneath the pavement of the vacuum spaces on the west side of the building, you'd have your, your sanitary leads that lead out from the wash tunnel bay. There's a grease interceptor that captures any, you know, chemical items that get caught up in that. And then it goes through three separate water reclamation tanks that recycle as much water as they can, get about 80% per wash. So each, each wash uses, I believe it's 30 gallons, so almost all of that ends up coming back in.
I'm Adam Meyer, I'm the regional manager for Express Wash. So on the typical car wash, if you wash it at your house, you use 125 gallons. Our wash is used just over 20.
And that's after the recycling?
That's after, that's after the reclaim.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Dros?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The engineering letter mentioned a sidewalk along Fox Drive. Is that, is that within your ability as part of the agreement to install that? Or would that need to be on your property in a way that might affect your landscaping?
I mean, if it's in the right of way, does Fox Drive have a, a public right of way?
Private, it looks like, but there's probably some sort of.
Okay, that would have to be brought up with the agreement with the neighbor then. I mean, we'd have no problem doing it, but we can't promise that on his behalf. If not, yeah, I mean, we'd be willing to kick it back to, to our property line. It would just be quite a bit off the road at that point.
And then the last question, Jake, if you go to A2-1 elevation. So the, kind of the, by my judgment, the eastern and southern facades are, I guess, a little less inviting than the western facade. Is, is there any embellishments or architectural details or windows or what have you that can be added to kind of break up the, you know, it's basically just, basically brick and, and the siding facade. Some of the examples you shared from, I think it was the Shaker, Ohio rendering, had a little more street front character to it. Is that something that could be added to this?
Yeah, I mean, they're able to add sort of the facade over the top that makes it look nice or even clean up sort of with, I'm no architect, forget all the terms, but yeah, they can, they can spice things up as far as visuals with, you know, accents on, over doorways or windows. So a lot of that, that eastern side that you're talking about is the, the mechanical rooms. So I, I don't know, I think they're pretty limited as far as windows is what they can put there.
And less so, less so the east side is more the southern side. The side that people are going to see as they come into Livonia off the expressway for the first time, it's, again, it's one of these gateway properties that, you know, prefer to have a little more character to it. The one on Plymouth Road, it's narrower, but it feels a little more, you know, with the glass, it just feels a little more consistent with that commercial corridor. Is this, you know, it's just a lot of brick and, and two garage doors. So I guess I'd just offer, you know, maybe working with planning staff to explore that a little bit and see if that.
Yeah, I mean, if that was attached as a condition, I know we could accommodate some there. Yep. I don't know as far as windows, just because I'm not, I don't know the structural bones of the building, but I know they can, they can do some stuff with it, yeah.
Okay.
Is that all, Mr. Dros?
That is it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
Good evening. I happen to like this rendering of the building compared to the three renderings that you brought to us at the study session. I think this is more tasteful for sure. Is this proposal?
Yeah, these would be our proposed colors and materials.
A fair rendering of what your, what your, what this building will look like at the end of the day?
Yes.
And with some enhancements Mr. Dros is talking about?
Hmm.
Okay. One of my concerns after the meeting last week was the, the car wash on Farmington Road just south of Eight Mile Road. I, I, I drive by there sometimes late at night and I, I, I know we've talked about LED lighting being turned off or not visible, but all the windows that are naturally on a car wash, when the lights are on, it looks absolutely terrible. And I see we've got enough provision in here to, to turn them off. And I've seen some other language in here that the, the car wash will look and see what they can do about it, but to me, that's a, it's a big deal. Those, those green, purple, orange, red lights, it looks like.
Yeah, so this was brought to my attention on Saturday.
Yeah.
On Monday, yesterday, I had switches installed on those lighting systems. As of tonight, it's part of the closing task for those to be shut off.
To be shut right off?
Completely off.
And no color, so whether it's bright white like we've got here or red, purple?
No, we're just going to shut them right down.
Beautiful. Good, good. My next question for you is, on the, on the east side of the property, we talked about the parking for the neighbor. Well, that's not your responsibility. They, they have some sort of a ability to park on the property in the past and now. I see a fence, maybe a concrete fence on that east side along the cemetery. Are you putting a wall up there or is that just what it looks like here?
That's just what it looks like now. That's the existing, yep, no, no screening changes to that side.
Let's go back to that for a minute. So the cemetery fence that's, that's all run down there, you're not putting anything up along there, you're just going to right, properly run right up to that cemetery fence that's dilapidated and there'd be nothing there? I thought I saw a rendering here of a fence.
I think there's a, a small brick wall and a fence, if I'm.
Say currently there is a, a brick wall and with like a iron fence above it.
Yeah.
So there's like a grade change right there.
Okay, so there's no, no, no enhancements to that side of the property?
Not at this time, no.
So if you, if you're going to allow some parking, if you're going to allow some parking at the back of that property for the theater, is there a way to pour a sidewalk on that side of the property where they're not walking through your lane, lanes to get to a theater event?
I think that might be contingent on what the grading in that area looks like. I haven't done a full deep dive on that yet. If there was any way to create some sort of pedestrian access path on that side, yeah, that's something we could accommodate.
Of course, the problems come with it, winter time, who's going to shovel the snow and on and on, but it, it would, if you allowed parking in the back for them, it would allow them to walk down a sidewalk or someone to, down a sidewalk as opposed to walking through your lanes if they had an afternoon show. So maybe, maybe something to look at. That's all, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Care Magna. Any other questions for the petitioner? I just have a couple. The, the write-up that we have says that there's going to be nine outdoor vacuums and I think 14 interior ones. The renderings, of course, show many more than that. We've already established, I believe, that the renderings are not necessarily an accurate representation of.
Yeah, that's, the renderings are just to show kind of the, the feel and colors of the site, yeah.
Okay. The, so my question is, I like the idea of indoor vacuums. It's, it's kind of a game changer. It's new, it's different. It's also takes a lot of the noise that's generated by those and puts it interior, to the interior of your building, which is not a bad thing. My question to you then is, do you need the outdoor vacuums?
So Express's model, they try to get to 20 on each site. And that's also, it's a nice, you know, sort of eye-grabbing, almost advertisement for the fact that you have, hey, there's free vacuums here. It's a nice addition there as well as, yeah, I mean, if you have a nice day, you don't necessarily need to do it indoors. They, they're able to cycle through so many cars through so quickly, so that means they, they do want to have enough vacuum spaces to accommodate those and if, in case there was a need for that many at once.
Okay, because it, it sort of negates the, the benefit of having that sound moved inside if you still have them outdoors, but, and I understand your reasoning why. So to that, to that point, I'm going to ask, how is the noise of the vacuums mitigated? How is that managed?
So I actually have a sound study here for both the, the blower at the end of the tunnel and the vacuums themselves. So the way the vacuum system works is there's a, a correlator box, if you can see, that will, essentially all the noise is going to come out of that. The vacuums themselves are nearly silent. So those are located on the end of the vacuum rows, I believe on the northwest corner of the building there, maybe southwest. Yep, southwest corner there, that, item number five on the southwest corner. So that's your correlator box. And we have those usually fenced with landscaping, which does dim some of the noise, but I have a, a sound study here at a distance of 30 feet, you're down to 23 decibels, which is lower than the traffic volume you're going to see on a Six Mile Road anyway. I can pass these around if you want to see them.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, noise concern is, is relatively low and especially when you're far away from residential like this site is.
So you're, you're not going to have nine individual vacuum units out there just mooring away? There's one singular unit.
Yep, one correlator box.
Okay, so this is a different, more a modern version of a vacuum system.
Exactly.
Okay. That was my one concern that I wanted to raise. The other thing is the exterior materials, for the most part, we do have two of your locations in this city already. Is it safe to assume that, as we look at those two locations, that we're looking at similar building materials?
Yes.
Do you use the quick brick at these other sites as well?
Yep.
Okay, and that's a system that you've had good luck with in terms of durability?
Nearly all of the Express projects have that.
They're all using quick brick, okay. We've had problems in the past with thin brick, you know, systems, but I know they're getting much better. If you've had experience with them, I'm going to trust that they're going to be good for you, because obviously, you don't want your building looking ratty or...
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, there's 10-year-old buildings in the Columbus area that still look brand new.
Okay, great, excellent. That's it for me for now. Is there any other questions from any of my fellow commissioners? Mr. Long?
Just following up on the vacuums, so, you have the, did you call it a correlator?
Yes.
Box for the outdoor? Is that the same thing? How does the indoor one work? If I go into the indoor one, am I going to go deaf trying to vacuum my car? What's the...
So, it does have correlators that run those two. I believe they're located back in the mechanical room, so they're not out in the hangar.
So, they're not outside, but they're in a mechanical room of the thing? Okay. All right, thank you. Just curiosity thing. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. If there's no other questions from any of our commissioners, no other questions, we've covered that. I'm going to go to our audience, so we're going to have you sit down for just a few moments. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I'm sure there are. Feel free to come forward to one of our podiums. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Waterman. I'm a lifelong Livonia resident. I'm at 20336 Meadowview. That's ID 8 Mile on 275. And I am the Board Vice President of Trinity House Theater. I've been with the board a little over 10 years. Thank you for hearing us out tonight. We're an all-volunteer arts and culture nonprofit. And certainly, there are some very pragmatic concerns that we have. Thank you to the commission for bringing a few of those up tonight, specifically Mr. Drows and Mr. Carmonjo. The parking, the traffic, environmental impact, noise. But we realize that we can't necessarily choose our neighbors. We're a little nonprofit. That being said, I want you to consider that this is the place that you're looking to put a car wash next to. And I'm not, I don't think car washes are the enemy. I don't think these people are the enemy. We realize that, you know, at the end of the day, you need to work with your neighbors. But once again, this is the place that you're considering putting a car wash next to. A place built in 1850, before Livonia was even a city. A place where in 1856, the Third Annual Michigan Anti-Slavery Society held their meeting. And the abolitionist and civil rights icon Sojourner Truth was not only in attendance at that meeting, she also spoke and sang a song. This is the place that in 1981, Paul Patton and Trinity Church members formed together to form a community theater. And for the better part of 20 years, they were a part of offering brave, truthful, necessary works of art for the community. And then, over the last 25 years, we've transitioned mostly to live music, and we're known as one of the state's best listening rooms, and we seat about 78 people, so it's a very intimate setting. This is a place where this very night, on a Tuesday night, middle of the week, there are approximately 12 to 15 people with guitars for an open-mic night to brave the stage. And people right from our very community having that opportunity in this building. Car washes aren't the enemy, however. Really ask you to consider what you are putting around such a cultural gem, especially in light of things like the Livonia Built Proposal not going through. And you have something in Livonia that does bring culture. We realize that we're small. We realize that we're hidden, in a sense, sometimes. But just ask you to really consider, is there maybe something better, more of a fit, more in concert with Trinity House as a neighbor? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Waterman. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Bill Dolent, and I'm a resident of Quakertown, 16215. And I agree with Trinity House as well. I mean, certainly, something maybe other than a car wash, and again, to his point, I'm not against them either. But where that is, again, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me and a lot of my neighbors who aren't here. But at any rate, that and the traffic, even though you're going to put that light there, if you guys have seen that, it's just off of 275, the Six Mile exit. So, if you actually, you can't see it there, but what is it, maybe 100 yards tops? And they're going to put a driveway even closer to that exit. So, those are my concerns. I think, you know, especially with Comerica Go Down and all of that development, that could very well spawn something else as well. Though, to his point, maybe a restaurant as well, but whatever that is, I have a hard time with a car wash there. Again, it just doesn't seem to fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolent. Anyone else wishing to speak? There's a gentleman coming forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening all. My name's William Hurley, also a resident of Quakertown. It's kind of cool to be speaking here on this auspicious occasion, the 1,234th, 1234, meeting. I can't believe many of you guys made that joke. I'm not nearly as eloquent or cogent as the last two speakers, so this will be a bit disjointed, but please bear with me.
I'll be fine.
I first take a little bit of offense to the statement that we in the Motor City are underserved with car washes. We keep clean automobiles. I can count three within one mile of this proposed location. Seven in Hagerty, five in Hagerty, and six in Hagerty. Excuse me, I'm not a great public speaker.
You're doing fine.
Traffic is already a great issue. And while I do appreciate what the Schoolcraft representative was talking about, if we need that driveway move, like me and my buddies will just go do it, so you can get your light without putting a car wash there. A car wash is suburban blight. I don't mean to be rude, sirs. You know, Detroit's known as like the land of liquor stores. It's not a great vibe. We don't need another car wash. It is aesthetically unpleasing. I understand that those gentlemen, they did a great job of trying to make their car wash look good. It still looks like a car wash. I don't see any great driving economic value from it. It's not going to promote a bunch of good jobs for Livonia residents. You know, if the car wash goes in, I guess I hope it's a success. But should it not be, what the hell else are we going to put there after we've got to remediate the property? Another car wash. At least with the present, you know, building, multiple different kinds of restaurants could go in there. Another business could take it over. It's got options. A car wash is a car wash, and it seems like damn forever. It's not quite a dry cleaner, but, and I can appreciate the environmental safeguards that the gentleman were speaking about. It still pollutes. And then, as the gentleman from Trinity House stated, there's a beautiful little cemetery right there. Let's not pollute that. Sorry, I was writing down a lot as you guys were speaking. I just find it disingenuous to discuss a traffic study, saying that a car wash won't increase traffic. I'm sorry, I only just learned about this meeting. I would have gotten my own traffic study done. Nobody... Okay.
You're doing fine.
By its very nature, it needs more traffic to be successful. And then, the young lady from Schoolcraft was discussing that when they did their study, that Schoolcraft had expected some developments of its own that it could take on the traffic of. Well, I mean, that study doesn't seem to hold any water anymore if Schoolcraft expected to take on that extra traffic or assume that extra traffic at this light, which, again, me and my buddies will put in if you keep out the car wash. If you're going to put the car wash there, this traffic study, I mean, I haven't read it, I'll be honest, doesn't seem to hold much water. I can appreciate the discussion about the noise. I walk my dog past that daily. It would be scared of this car wash. Have you ever driven past a car wash with your windows on and not heard it? I can appreciate the decibel counts quoted. I know nothing about acoustics. Car washes are noisy. I mean, let's put a small airport in. Why not? Livonia Airport. There's great potential for this property beyond a car wash. On that corner of Six Mile and Hagerty, the north east side, it's of such great value, it seems like a short sale to sell to a car wash. And I could be mistaken. I was talking to my brother about it today, and he said something about a Whole Foods. I have no idea. You put a Whole Foods in there, let's get a nice ass... Pardon me. Let's get a nice restaurant in there to make organic meals. Let's support that little gem of a corner that the gentleman from Trinity House was talking about. This area is about to become, and I say this area because I wrote this down when I was at home on that intersection, that area is becoming more attractive. And I'm sorry, despite the best efforts of Frank Lloyd Wright, you couldn't make a car wash an attractive place in that area.
Sir Hurley, I'm going to ask if you can try to summarize at this point.
No, that's the end of my points.
Okay.
Sorry, I was writing down a lot as you guys were speaking.
I understood, yeah.
I... Lastly, I just want to say that the petitioner's representative, on several occasions, was asked questions. He stated, "I'm sure, and there's no resistance without evidence of these, you know, speculative statements." Discussing about the Fox Drive driveway, et cetera. I would ask that if these statements are going to be taken as true, that they be in writing before this body, before they be taken at face value. Thank you for letting me ramble.
Oh, you're okay. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hurley. Hi, good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Lloyd Vandenbrink, and I have been involved with Trinity House Theater since 1985. As you know or heard, Trinity House is a volunteer-run arts organization and one of Livonia's cultural treasures. For nearly 40 years, it has given residents a place to gather, to celebrate the arts, and to feel connected as a community. I'm here tonight to respectfully object to the request for a variance, a Section 3.0 of the zoning ordinance that would allow a car wash. This code exists to protect the character of our neighborhoods, to ensure appropriate land use and safeguard residents from negative impacts. Car washes bring noise, traffic, chemical runoff, and harsh lighting that don't belong next to a cultural landmark or in an already congested corridor. Trinity House already faces challenges with access, and adding a high-intensity business would only make things worse. A variance should only be granted in cases of true hardship. Business convenience is not a hardship. It's a preference. If granted, this sets a precedence that weakens your zoning commissions or zoning protections and chips away at the kind of city Livonia wants to be. Trinity House, as I understand it, has faithfully maintained its building, which is owned by the city, and enriches our community for decades. Please consider what is at stake for our cultural life and quality of life. I urge you to deny this variance. If Trinity House goes under, the city will be needing to take care of that property as well. Thank you for your time and your service to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Vandenbrink. Anyone else wishing to speak? We have a lady coming forward. As this young lady is coming forward, I just want to explain too, for folks in our audience that haven't been through this process before, just so you understand a little bit better, the planning commission is going to, is reviewing this to make a recommendation to city council. We're going to make an approving or denying recommendation. That would then go to city council. They would hold their own, actually, excuse me. If we make an approving recommendation, it would go to city council. If we make a denying motion, then the petitioner has a right to appeal that to city council, in which the city council will ultimately make the final decision on this. So, just so you understand, this is a sort of a multi-step process. This is the first step. We're kind of doing the heavy lifting and homework on the site plan, and then the council will see this as well in the future, so. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Ilyne McDonald, Livonia, Michigan. I agree with all the other speakers that this should be denied. I don't think it's an appropriate thing to have a car wash at this location next to Trinity House and next to the souls that are buried in the cemetery. You also have to take in consideration the people that live in the assisted-living facility. I just think it's just too much. And the gentleman that just spoke previously stated about the upcoming developments and the apartments that are going to be put in at Six and Hagerty. You've got all kinds of opportunities to bring in different businesses, restaurants, coffee shops, something, but something that's more acceptable for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Anyone else? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bill Keith. I live in Redford, but volunteer at Trinity House Theater. And first, I just want to thank the representatives that have mentioned the concerns of parking at the theater, because it would be easy to miss that. It's a very small building. It's nice to see that there is possibly some space at the north end of the property where there might be able to be some parking. That's encouraging. I would agree with everybody about car washes. I love car washes. I love when I get my car washed. I love the higher-quality car washes that I've been able to use. But Livonia has plenty of them. I was just looking at the All Things Livonia Facebook page, and they put up a new graphic at the top of their page that says, "All Things Livonia: Home of Chicken Restaurants and Car Washes." And I know they were kind of poking at this, because there was a lot of comments about this development and the impact on the area. And I just think everybody else has highlighted a lot of the concerns. I would especially be concerned during the construction phase, because we are limited to about 13 spaces right out in front of the theater and the cemetery. And right now, we're fortunate that the children's center that is on the other side is vacant at the moment, so there is some additional parking over there. But if ever there were both under construction at the same time, we would be in a world of hurt. We used to have people who would park on the other side of Six Mile in that office building, property right next to, I guess, Quakertown. But that is a risky prospect in and of itself, trying to cross Six Mile Road to get to the theater. And people used to park down at Comerica's property and would walk down. Not a bad walk, but once that goes under construction, that's going to make that cemetery and that theater property very challenged. But I appreciate you thinking about the theater as you've considered these questions and providing this opportunity to provide input.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Anyone else wishing to speak? I don't see anyone else wishing to speak. Is the petitioner, would you like to come forward and address any particular issues that were raised that you would like to address? Again, we're not... Again, we're not, we don't wanna get into a back and forth debate, but if there's any specific. Concerns that were mentioned that you wanted to address, I'm gonna give you that opportunity.
Yeah, I mean specifically the. The quantity of car washes in the area and the location. I mean. Express doesn't just pick a. Pick a property and throw something on there willy-nilly. I mean, this is a, it's a five million plus dollar development here. They do quite a bit of market study research. About, you know, they don't wanna put one right on top of another car wash. That's not a good business model for either party involved. And we feel really confident that this location, as far as demand for car washes, is not. Overpopulated in the area. Especially. Quite a few of the car washes that are nearby are the sort that are attached to like a mechanic's office or mechanic or not. Not quite up to the same business model as this one and are not always seen as direct competition. So the. Amount of washes in the nearby vicinity is not the major concern as far as the viability of this development. And I mean, I do appreciate the concerns of all the Trinity House speakers. I mean, we do not have any intention of being bad neighbors. I think if you look at. Either the other two. Express car washes that have already opened up in Livonia. They've even done some work not only on their own property, but cleaning up and. Aesthetic improvements to the neighboring properties as well. I mean, we know it's a car wash. It can only look so nice, but as far as landscaping and. In any way they can, they really go for like a Disney World level. Visual aspect as far as the. Landscape and presentation of the site goes. I mean, as far as environmental concern issues, I mean, they. Do a very good job collecting and dealing with all that and anything that would be the case, that it all goes out into the sanitary system. They're not, you know. Outwashing onto any neighboring properties, polluting. Anything other than just into the sanitary system itself. And then like the sound study that we passed out indicated, especially at the distance away from the neighboring property. Try to keep everything that's loud as far west as possible. Once you get to those distances, the sound impact on the neighboring properties is gonna be negligible.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hurley.
Just to add a couple of things on that.
Of course, go ahead, sir.
So as far as like with Trinity. You know, God bless them for what they're doing. I mean, absolutely great, great cause. But we are a great company for nonprofits in the area. The other two Livonia sites, the first ten days for both, we raised money for Cares. Next week, I'll be presenting a check for over seventeen thousand dollars to that charity. Us as a company, we gave away just under five hundred thousand dollars last year to local nonprofit companies. This year, we'll be over seven hundred. And our owner is very big on not going with major charities. We go with small, local charities that we can make an impact with. Mr. Carmago, you had brought up the adjacent properties. In Livonia, right when I got there, the first day I stepped up there, I was not happy with the landscaping on the adjacent properties on both sides. I didn't make that property owner come in and clean it up. We took the cost. We cleaned up those property lines to make sure it met our standards. I go to these sites twice a week. On my inspections, if there is so much as a straw wrapper on the adjacent property. They lose their points for their parking lot because we train our staff to clean up that property. We wanna be great neighbors, you know. And the Livonia on the Farmington Road. I got there, the fence in the back that went around the residential area there, it was dilapidated. We paid to have it fixed. The retaining wall at the Plymouth Road location. It wasn't ever required for it to be painted or have anything done to it. We went in there, we cleaned it up, we painted it, and we made sure it was right. As far as the noise. Right off one of our back producers at our Plymouth Road location going into Dunkin' Donuts. Dunkin' Donuts' drive-through is right there. They have no problem using their drive-through with our back producer. So, I mean, we really wanna be great neighbors. We do have extremely, extremely high standards. If you go by one of our facilities, go by our Livonia locations, they are spotless. Now, I know people have a bad image of car washes, but we elevate that to a different level. And you can end up with something far worse if this was turned down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. If there's no other questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagna.
I did find that picture that I was talking about with that brick wall or concrete wall looking toward the cemetery. You might wanna look at that on your renderings here because it does illustrate just what you talked about. A very clear and good-looking. Eastern front of your property. It doesn't look like that today. And hearing that the wall isn't going to be there. I don't say, won't say it doesn't sit well with me, but what you're showing in this picture sits very well with me. So I think you need to look at that and see what you can do with that eastern side. That talks right back to your story you just told us. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagna. If there's no other questions or comments, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And a motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagna.
I'll make an approving motion. The request to construct a new automated auto wash facility at 3888. Six Mile Road is approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. The site plan marked sheet C200 dated July 9, 2025. As revised, prepared by Manic Smith Group is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, the demolition plan marked sheet C101 dated July 9, 2025. As revised, prepared by Manic Smith Group is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number three, that the landscape plan marked sheets L100 and L101 dated July 9, 25, as revised, prepared by Manic Smith Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, that the photometric plan marked sheets C600 dated July 9, 2025. As revised, prepared by Manic Smith Group is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number five, the exterior elevations identified as A2-1 dated July 10, 2025, prepared by SBA Studios, is approved and shall be adhered to. Number six, the hours of operation shall be limited to the following, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Number seven, all light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing. Across property lines and glaring onto adjacent roadways. All exterior lights shall be turned off or dimmed between 8:00 p.m. and 7:30 a.m. Number eight, underground sprinklers shall be installed for all landscaped and sodded areas. All planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction. Of the inspection department and permanently maintained in healthy condition. Number nine, that the site's landscaping shall be permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number 10, all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights away, shall be sodded instead of hydroseeding. Number 11, the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that complement the building. And the enclosure gates shall consist of opaque and durable steel or composite panels. Number 12, that the detailed stormwater detention plans are submitted to the engineering department before construction. Number 13, only conforming signage is approved with this petition. And any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number 14, no LED band light or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, included but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number 15, the car wash bay lights shall be shut off when closed. Number 16, unless approved by the inspection department, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles. Designed to attract the attention of passing motors shall be prohibited. Number 17, the plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department with the building permit applications. And number 18, per section 13.13 of the Livonia zoning ordinance. This approval is valid for one year from the date of the approval by city council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void after the one-year period. And I'd like to again reinforce the sidewalk, not only potentially sidewalk wall on the east side of the property. But also, as Mr. Droz talked about, the sidewalk that runs along Fox Drive that we talked about earlier.
Okay. All right, is there support?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer support, but I would like to. Offer an amendment to number seven and Mr. Caremagna's are in the approving resolution. Where. All exterior lights shall be turned off or dim between 8:00 p.m. and 7:30 a.m. I think we need to change that to 7:00 a.m. to be consistent with. The hours that we're setting out in number six, where they're allowed to be open Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
That makes sense.
Nice catch. I'm good with it.
Okay.
Thank you. So support.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Mr. Droz?
Chair, Mr. Carmago, a couple suggested amendments for your consideration. One, that a sign and sealed statement from a professional traffic engineer validating that the development. Essentially will not have adverse impacts under the proposed condition within the traffic study. So essentially. Loading the proposed use into that traffic study, updating it and providing information to planning and/or council. I have a couple more, so I don't know if you wanna go one by one.
That makes fine sense for me, yes.
Okay. Next one is. It feels like having signed approvals from the. First and foremost, the Fox Drive, having that in place before it goes to council. Cause it's, as noted by several, that access is pretty important from a traffic standpoint. I think it addresses a lot of the concerns of the community. So that's the next one.
We'll discuss and agree.
Okay. The third one, I'm not sure exactly how to say this, but these are not, the traffic signal is a. Different project from what we're considering tonight. But I know a lot of my concerns would be. Put at ease if there was assurance that the traffic signal is in an operational as a condition of the certificate of occupancy. So I'm not sure if that's something that we can do, but it feels to me like it's important for the project to have that traffic signal up and running. So it's a little complicated from a legal perspective, but.
It is. Because the car wash is not putting the signal in. School craft property is putting the signal in. Sounds like it's well on its way, but I don't know how you tie that back to this car wash.
Okay, I can pull that one if necessary.
I have the same problem. I have, that's right there in my notes. Yeah, but I don't know how you.
Yeah.
Yeah, how do you, how do you. Obligate this petitioner?
I guess, you know, what I would rely upon or what I would, how I resolved it in my mind was that, you know, that's gonna be up to council.
Yeah.
And by the time it gets to council, hopefully, they're firing off along. But I would think the council would take that into consideration as they ultimately approve or deny. So that's how I got past it.
Okay, good. And then maybe just the last concern is. You know. This is. As was noted, this is a. You know, it's not a natural resource, but we have a community and resource that's potentially being impacted by this. And. You know, it seems to me before this goes to council, maybe this isn't an item of the approving motion, but. I think certainly having done some homework with actual sit-down meetings to talk about this and what can be done. Because I think, you know, much like we might see if a project impacts a portion of a wetland, it has an impact on, you know, the greater natural resource. Cutting off the parking and other access for this existing use. I think it needs to be mitigated. And so some consideration that the applicant engage. In a documented way with the Trinity House prior to the council would be my last condition.
I think that gives them time to discuss that with them in greater detail. Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on this petition? I do, I do have a number of notes as well. I wanted to make sure everything is covered. I'm gonna go through things I'm hearing might be missing. Double-stripped parking, I didn't see in the approving resolution and I believe they're showing single stripe.
Yes, that should be in there.
So if we can get double striping.
Sure.
Okay. That's just one of our standard things. I have the sidewalks along Fox Drive that we already mentioned and also working with the Trinity Theater. Property and access or potential. Parking abatement for them. That's gonna be more of a. As noted by Mr. Droz, it's gonna have to be a coordinated effort.
Negotiate.
We can't obligate them to do something, but if they can try their best effort on that. The. Is there any feeling about mandating a right turn only onto Six Mile for that exit drive? There was some discussion on that.
I'm not the maker of the motion. I would be fine with that, though. Also, I don't even want to see maybe some wayfinding signs again. Pushing everybody, as many people as possible out Fox Drive.
Encouraging to Fox Drive.
Encouraging. Again, it's not enforceable, but.
They're nice in theory, whether or not people listen to them or not.
Yeah, I know.
Is a total, total different animal. I'm okay with the right turn coming out of. Out of the driveway, the exit driveway on Six Mile Road. I think that's good.
I mean, the alternative would be you could make the entrance off Six Mile an entrance only and say, no exiting allowed. So all traffic coming out of those tunnels would have to turn to Fox Drive.
We don't even have an agreement with Fox yet, right?
Correct.
But again, council would have the ability to, this is our recommendation to them, so council would be able to rectify that should they not come to an agreement.
Yeah.
Just a thought. I'm throwing it out there.
I got you, yeah. So right turn out of the car wash, I'm okay with, although when the light goes in, it's probably not gonna be necessary.
Right, cause that'd be alleviated.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the light won't alleviate. Left turns out of the car wash, that'll still be a problem.
But you'll slow them down. You'll slow them down as they're coming up to the light and you probably can make that left.
You can crawl across. I understand what you're saying, but.
But I'm no traffic.
I would want that, yeah, I still would want that to be right turn only, but.
Right turn only, okay, let's put that in there.
Let's put that on.
All right. It's gonna be right turn only off Six Mile is a recommendation. And then the improvements to the south-facing facade of the building, Mr. Droz brought that topic up, seeing that there's some changes to the rendering. I don't know that we really hammered out exactly what those are at this point.
I would agree with that and. I would say cautiously adding something to that south side because I know what I saw at the study session. Last week was a little wild and I didn't care for any of that. So cautiously adding some features to the south side to make it look a little better.
So to work with the planning staff.
Yes.
There's options of spandrel glass, other things that could break up that facade. Sound reasonable? Okay. Supporters all right with that?
Supporters okay with it.
Okay, I think that covers all of mine. Mr. Yozzi, have you been able to capture?
Yes. I think I've got a good record of it.
Okay, very good, cause there's a, yeah, a number of items suggested, so I appreciate all that from my colleagues. Is there any other questions on the motion to approve? Comments? If not, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Caremagna votes aye. Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Droz?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
No.
No. Mr. Wilshaw?
Vote aye. Motion passes. That will go on to city council with an approving recommendation. Again, for folks in the audience, this is a recommendation being made to city council. City council will hold their own public hearing on this item and make the final decision. So. If you're interested in this item, feel free to continue on following it through city council and good luck with your project, sir. Thank you for coming, everyone, tonight. We only have one item left on our agenda. I do wanna note before I go to that item that our. Colleague, Mr. Ventura, will be rejoining the dais.
If he's still out there.
If he's still awake. There is one item left on our agenda. Mr. Secretary, that is approval of minutes.
Approval of the minutes to the 1,233rd Public Hearing and Regular Meeting held by the Planning Commission on July 22, 2025.
All members were present for that meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
That's by Mr. Long and Mr. Bonjero to approve. If there's no objection, I think I can safely show six to approve.
Welcome to the party.
No objection.
Welcome back, sir. All right, we see no objection on that. That is now approved and that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support.
That's by Bonjero and Long to adjourn. If there's no objection, we can show six on that. See no objections. This will take us to the end of our meeting, and I do want to thank Livonia Television for bringing this meeting to the community, and wish a good night to see Livonia at 8:30 p.m. Good night, Livonia.
Good night, sir.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.